Okay. Welcome, everyone. This is absolutely delightful to see you here at the Town Council for our Town Forum of 2025. So thank you all for coming. Public councilors. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, Mark. Just a minute. And I'm going to repeat that with a note on my desk. Right, let me start again. Welcome, everyone. Thank you all for coming. Public councilors and officers, all of you for joining me today here at the Town Forum of 2025. I want you to be aware that we are videoing, recording this meeting. And so this will be uploaded to our YouTube channel. If you don't wish to be visible on the video, please do. Uh, speak to your councilman or officer. Uh, I would just like to highlight some key points over the meeting format, because we haven't really set the agenda tonight, actually. It's a rather busy agenda, it's quite busy. Please can I ask everyone to have their phones turned off? Or set silent? I also just want to draw your attention to the fire exits, which are fantastically marked there. Uh, and also, in the event of fire, the lift shouldn't be used. The town council team will help anyone with these systems to exit the building. And the assembly point is at the forecourt of the HSBC next to Tesco Express Store. But because the road is closed, it won't be too much of a schlep to get under the road. But I'm hoping that's... Was it open? No? Okay. Uh, please remain seated unless we're invited to speak or need to take a comfort break. Toilet facilities are out in the corridor, just literally outside the door. Members of the public are invited to participate in the meeting. If you're going to participate in this meeting. And it is, however, requested that questions be asked after each presentation. So what we're actually going to do is have a question and answer session at the end of the evening. So you can collect up all questions. Uh, because we will be on time, uh, or against time. Um, anyone presenting or participating will be offered a microphone. Uh, and also I'll be sharing my little mic here with others that I'm going to be speaking to directly. To all present, we want you to show respect to others at the Town Forum and avoid interruptions where possible to enable others to follow the meeting. Thank you for listening. On behalf of the Town Council, I would like to thank you all for attending. That's nice to greet, so now, thank you for listening to that. So I hope you just enjoy some of the refreshments and networking in the other room. We're so delighted to be able to have our previous grant winners to come along and display. And in fact, some of them have said, "This is such a great idea." And it is a great idea. And so thank you to our officers for organising that. And thank you to all the stores and the ones that we were able to have in the room were Bishopstone United Charities, Care for Carers, Coffee and Wine New Club, Culture Connect Project CIC, Family Support Work, Gardening in Action CIC, New Haven Seaford Seapodet Corps, Seaford Bombfire Society, Seaford Community Events Committee, Seaford District Guides, Seapod Dramatic Society from the Seapod Little Theatre, SENS Connected, St James's Struts, Seaford's Simulphus Hospice, and also the Teddy Treats Children's Charity. I'm hoping I managed to get that just saying eventually, while some of our last victims did as well. I'm welcome to you all. Um, we also have a little booklet here, which is going to be available online on our website. And it gives you lots of much more detail about all the grants, all the organisations and the grants they've received and what they've spent their funds on and who they are. So you can follow them for the next, uh, year. So that's lovely. Uh, so please don't forget to have a look at that. I'm going to take us through a series of agenda items, starting with item one, which is going to be the adoption of the minutes in the 2024 Admiral Town Meeting, um, which we also call the Town Forum. Uh, and there are drafts of these minutes that probably some of you have seen. Or if you'd like to, yes, we can hand them out. So I really just want to ask if anyone has any questions about the draft minutes? No? Okay, so I would like to ask you then, then as the audience, to approve the minutes for 2024 meeting. And I'm going to have to ask for a proposer and a seconder. So I actually love Peter White, thank you very much as a proposer. Do I have a seconder? Thank you very much, Mark, that's lovely. And we've noted that now we need to vote. So we need to vote all those in favour of accepting these minutes. Thank you. Uh, all those against? And any rescensions? Hi, thank you very much, so we can confirm that those are passed. Right. So the next agenda item is Seaford Town Council update. Now unfortunately, our town clerk, who's actually our new permanent town clerk, recently appointed Steve Quayle, can't be with us tonight. So I'm going to be taking you through his presentation, so please bear with me. Uh, I will have a voice by the end of the evening. But, um, I'm going to be doing that part of the evening as well. Um, so I might just come out, I think. Yeah. Thank you very much. And take my mic with me. Put it back in my pocket. Thank you. Just find it a little bit easier to see the slides and talk towards you. I'm a bit closer to you, which is not nice. Okay. Um, so, welcome. And what we're going to do is just, we haven't got this, we really don't want anything too heavy going here. So this is a few PowerPoint slides, just to draw your attention to some of our achievements, some of the ideas, the things that we've been doing and also our future plans. We just wanted to kind of bring you up to date a little bit. So, um, our first slide is actually about our achievements. And these are about our assets and our green spaces. Okay. Uh, so the first thing, we just wanted to, um, remind you about the Martella toilets at the cafe. Now the build, rebuilt, that, um, building, um, completed, was completed in spring 2024. Uh, and it's now open and has been open for some time. And we are continuing to monitor and to maintain the building. There are always snacks when you have a new building. There've been a few, but we have managed to work through those. And I know many of you have probably enjoyed some coffee and cake on the seafront there. So we're really, really grateful that we have that. And we're working very closely with our concession holders there and other partners across Seaford to make this a really helpful service for all of you at the speech front. And next door to that, we're also really grateful to be able to install a Changing Places facility. Uh, this is part of the National Changing Places Scheme. So this organisation provides this enhanced toilet facilities for those people with special equipment who are maybe disabled or require assistance or care. So it's quite, if you haven't seen it, it's quite a large square building. Uh, and again, we've had a few snacks with that, but we are looking through those. And it is there and it's available. Uh, and it's certainly much more accessible than other previous, um, facilities. Uh, we also have a new lease for the Martella Museum. So just walking down the beachfront a little bit. And we've been really pleased as Town Council to be able to renew the lease from that Martella Museum. Uh, we, we love going there. Is there anyone in the room that's not been to the museum? Ah, you've all been to the museum, of course you have. And I really enjoyed taking my family there as well. So, uh, we're really pleased that that's, that's all happened. Uh, and the next issue that we've taken over is the urban grass cutting. And again, it's something else, it's a bit like parking, isn't it? We're not going to talk about parking. But grass cutting, amazing. We are now actually managing the grass cutting ourselves because we've taken that contract back from the county council. And we are using, um, an organisation called Countrymen, who we're working with really, really closely to make sure that people are happy with the grass cuts. And we're working with residents to get feedback on the grass cutting. So that, you will see the change in the last 12 months. And we hope that will continue to go forward very positively. Uh, the next, uh, important bit of news really is that we've become a core partner at the National Nature Reserves. And you think, well, you know, there's a lot of people and organisations that are monitoring and, and really own some of our assets, especially up near Sainte-Cloire, et cetera. And one of the things that's really important for us is working in partnership with them. But it also means that we can't just decide as a Town Council to go off and do things. We have to actually work very collaboratively with them. Now, the King, as part of his, um, ideas, um, wanted to, um, set up a series of National Nature Reserves. And so we were actually one of the first ones that got in to this, um, idea. And so we've become, um, His Majesty the King's, one of His Majesty the King's National Nature Reserves. And this includes, uh, the local nature reserve. It's also a site for specific interests and it's part of the South Downs National Park. Uh, so all of those organisations, for anything that we're going to discuss and talk about, um, which we've done in another slide, we have to talk to all of those people as well. But that's good, because that means that we're all coming together and thinking about the different perspectives that we bring to the table and of the support we can give each other. Uh, the other area, of course, is that we have tons of green space in Seaford. And one example of one area where we've actually spent quite a bit of time, um, just clearing the vegetation and improving this, is actually there up on the Seaford's Nut Shlott High Over. So that's all been cleaned and cleared. All of these projects take a long time though. It would be great to just that you could get a little round to go and do it. But unfortunately, it's quite a long, a long meeting on these projects. But we're really, really pleased that we've managed to do that. And also, the golf course, we are continuing to run a very environmentally friendly golf course. And we're doing that by actually having some very carefully developed plots of wildflowers, which we've been maintaining over the last five years and we are also increasing. Um, so that's quite an exciting project. And we'd be really pleased to work with the golf club on doing that as well. So that's another area, if you like, of our assets and green spaces that we've been pleased to develop. Now, the next slide is very dear to my heart. Uh, one of my focuses this year has been very much looking at community engagement and how we can move together and work together. And so it's been good to know that this, we know that this is also happening at the core level and of all our officers also working together with residents. And one of the key issues, and I, I saw quite a few of you at the local Lewis Plan meeting when we had it at the South Downs there, there was a planning, um, there was a consultation. This was followed by a series of, um, planning and highways committee meetings. And we were really grateful for officers and councillors out of those meetings to be able to then organise a focus group with residents who have really come together, both the Lewis Plan and local plan, fed in the most amazing amount of information to us that we were then able to feed into both the local plan and also the South Downs, uh, local plan. And those consultations will continue. Uh, and what we're hoping is that the, um, we'll find out a little bit more about the Lewis Plan hopefully later in the year and possibly the, um, South Downs Plan a bit later or into early next year. And the other area of work that we do at Seaford Town Council is we engage with stakeholders who have an interest in a specific area of the town. So we're talking here about our stakeholder groups, the salt, the kraut and also our beach users. And we meet regularly with those. We are coordinating through our officers. Some councillors attend these meetings and many residents who are interested in those specific areas also feed in their issues, their concerns, and also areas where we can think about making improvements. But we want to do it together. So this is about engagement and it's about partnership working. Uh, and as I say, it's something that's pretty much my soapbox. So I'm really pleased that this is still happening and it will continue to do so. And then, of course, we co-actively host events. Uh, I would say that this last year, I was very, very grateful that just after being, um, taking up the, the, the Mountain of Mare, I was able to go to the 80th Day Commemoration at the beach. And, um, Bombfire Society was there supporting us. Uh, and we have had an amazing, uh, band there. And we were tribute, we held the tribute for the town crier, Peter White, thank you very much. And I was able to read a poem from one of the young people who'd written a beautiful poem about peace. Uh, and it was a really lovely event and, and, and it was a, the weather was good. I remember that. Uh, and we were so pleased to be able to light the beacon. Um, and another collaborative enterprise that I'm sure many of you will remember has to be Seaford Christmas Magic. Uh, we have people in the room here who have been working so hard, uh, within local traders, with the market traders, with the Chamber of Commerce, all of us have been working together with, uh, the officers at the Town Council to make that event a really magical affair. Uh, and I have to say, I think last year was, well, Peter and I have definitely enjoyed eating the lantern parade. Uh, and all those fantastic lanterns from Skip. Uh, we've been working so hard with the schools. Uh, and then moving that very, very long, uh, very long procession into the, into the, um, into Broad Street there, about over a thousand people, it was phenomenal. We had to keep stopping, didn't we? Uh, so people could catch up behind us. We are continuing to work on that collaboration. And we have some great, exciting news and developments for that this year. Uh, and I should hope to be continuing to be engaged in that even though I'm not going to be there. Okay, then the other area, of course, of support and engagement has to be all of you or many of you who have just been telling us all about how you've been spending your grant money and all the amazing work that you do. It's been lovely to hear that. Uh, we were actually able to give away just under £23,000 last year in grant money. So the lowest grant's about £500, the maximum grant's for £3,000. And you've all been telling me how you've been really pragmatic and, you know, invested so well in, in those, um, in those grant giving. Uh, and we're going to, we're just going through the grant process again this year. So it's going to be really exciting to see who comes forward and who applies again. And I think it is a real tribute to our officers and also to all of you that we can get together and find ways of improving, uh, so many of our local organisations. So thank you for that. And then I just wanted to add that we also have been in Seaford, um, getting involved in the Seaford Gift Giving Campaign. And we were able to pass on 150 gifts donated by residents and businesses to the family support work who we work alongside at Christmas and who distribute these to local families. Though, um, I had a quick chat with them just now and said, "How many, how many gifts did you actually get?" And they said, "Over 3,000." Which I think is phenomenal, really. Yeah. And then there's also other wonderful organisations that do similar things, like the Teddy Treats as well. So I, I need to take my hats off to you guys, because that's quite a difficult thing to organise. You know, if you've got 3,000 gifts, you know how to start organising that. I think that's just amazing. So you obviously have a lot of volunteers who prepare to build their shoes up and do that work. Okay. So backwards. So let's talk a little bit about future plans, because as I say, we could go on and on, couldn't we? But we're not going to do that. Um, really, in the last 12 months, we have shifted things a little bit internally, I'd say, in, in, in Seaford Town Council. And we've been able to review our staff and our committee structures. A lot of this work has been alongside our new town clerk, who was also the interim clerk for six months. Uh, and he's been leading on this work and doing a fantastic job. And, um, what we'd like to do now is to start our new municipal year, which starts actually next Wednesday, when the new mayor and new committees are voted in. Um, we're going to be looking at revising the committees. We have revised the committee structure. All the dates for our new committees are actually on our website. But it's actually a really interesting revision, because we've actually made our committees and our full councils quarterly. And all the committees feed into the full council. And for those of you that are involved in those committees at all, all come along and listen. It makes so much sense and it's so much more logical to do that. So I'm really pleased that we have this new structure to work to next year. And then we're also going to be feeding in, I think I jumped ahead there, uh, earlier, to the Lewis Local Plan, the South Downs Local Plan, because they both are going into their second phases. Uh, so we're legally, legally raising information from Lewis District to find out about the second phase of their local plan consultation. So we will be hearing about that. Uh, and I, I think it's going to happen towards the autumn. And once we know, we will definitely be engaging everyone into that and making sure that we can feed back through the Town Council's response. And as far as the South Downs, uh, local plan is concerned, that's possibly going to be more likely to be in 2026 coming forward. But again, all these consultations have specific phases, but we're making sure we're ahead of the game and we're going to be engaging. I also want to talk about the 80th Day celebrations on the 8th of May. Uh, and we do hope you're going to be able to join us. We're going to be, um, having, um, we're going to be having a proclamation by the town crier. Thank you, Peter, again, at Seaford Memorial on South Road at about nine o'clock in the morning. And then later, we're going to have a lighting of our beacon at nine thirty, uh, which is going to take place at much point. Uh, and throughout the town, there are, um, we've got little signs on the lampposts telling you all about it. We also have quite a lot of information about it too on our website. So please visit that if you're not sure about timings or where to go. So we also want to just tell you that we are working very, very hard. It feels like we're not. We are working very, very hard behind the scenes, consulting all those organisations I've just been talking about, about home gap steps, which is something that is so close to the heart of probably everyone. And every time we talk to residents, people kind of have this lovely look in their eyes saying, "When I was a kid, I used to go to Hannah's," and I did. And this is lovely, because we know that there's a history with home gap steps. This is our history. It's our legacy. Uh, but we have to be pragmatic about it, because there is a lot of damage to the area. And we are working very, very closely with appropriate partner authorities, with appropriate advisors to assess the site, to identify and consider the options, the costs and all the necessary permissions that we have to get and the timeframes before we can make something happen. So it does feel very frustrating, but all of that has to happen first. And because there are so many partners involved, it does take a while. But believe me, everybody's working really, really hard behind the scenes. And then not so far away, Southfield Barn. As you may know, uh, we have developed what we call the first stage of our Southfield Barn project. And this stage has actually been about looking at traffic management, because that isn't an issue for us. We are so popular, we have so many visitors, but we need to manage the traffic. And we've been able to look at doing that by having surveys. And also we're engaging with our local stakeholders and residents, some of whom have taken on doing some surveys themselves. And later this year, we're moving on with stage one. And we're going to start to prepare this initial planning stage, which, or phase, which will be looking at briefs for what we can actually do realistically on that site, obtaining quotes from consultants and of course engaging with all of you and those that are keenly interested in that area. And we have a lot of really committed councillors and officers who want to make this work this year going forward. But again, we have to do that consultation and engagement to make it happen. And then lastly, I just want to touch on the review of our council strategic plan. When we came into being, posed two years ago, uh, we were all together as councillors with officers. We thought about what we wanted for Seaford, what the priorities could be. And we'd been working steadily towards them. However, other things have often overtaken, like things like open gap steps. We weren't expecting to happen and other things happen. So it's often you have to pre-priorise, re-priorise. But one of the things that absolutely clear for us, that as we've restructured, we're engaging all staff and thinking very clearly about our, our committees and what we're going to do, we need to make sure everything joins up. So the review of our strategic plan is to make sure that the ideas that we have put forward will be practical, realistic and measurable. Because you need to know what we've been achieving. And it also needs to be done by, uh, underpinned by a green budget. So all of these things will happen as soon as Steve's back with us. He will, he's going to be engaging in discussions across the council to review the strategy. And then if required, we're going to be engaging some of you in those consultations as well. So it's a kind of very much going forward, very joint up. So I'm excited about this project. I think we're pleased that we, we know what's going on in Seaford. We know what's a little bit about what people want and what's important to them. But we now want to make sure that everybody sees this written down and regularly monitored and fed back to you. So that's really, as much as I wanted to feed back about the developments and our achievements and engagement at Seaford Town Council, I'm really appreciative of all the work that the officers and the town clerk has put into helping us to do that. Uh, and I'm going to leave that there for a moment. If that's all right. So, um, the next part of the agenda, um, we're going to be thinking about 25 years of Seaford Town Council. Because we're using Town Forum this year to celebrate our 25 years. Um, and I'm going to have to nip out for a moment while, you'll know why when I come back in, uh, while Isabel organises our preview of the news, because we have a wonderful collection. I'm not sure what a collection of news is called. I don't know if anybody's got an idea as for it. But we would like to introduce them all to you, which is really exciting. And we're also going to have an opportunity to have a chat about the last 25 years with them. Uh, so while that's being maneuvered, I'm just going to nip out for a minute and I'll be back. Yeah. So I'm going to turn my mic off, what? Thank you. So here we are, twenty five years at Seaford Town Council. And we have a great slide here. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of history because I'm hoping that our lovely mares in front of us are going to give us a little bit more. However, I'm sorry. Oh, is it my hand? I'm so sorry. It's not much good being waved around, is it, Alex? It's like, right. Anyway, so Seaford Town Council, twenty five years. On the first day from nineteen ninety nine by Louis Parish, by, of, of the Lewis Parish Road, the Parish Council Seaford was formed. Also the meeting of the council, the eighteen of May, nineteen ninety nine, it was resolved to change the status of the council from a parish to a town. And therefore the creation of Seaford Town Council. That is followed twenty five years where the town assets from Seaford Urban District Council were transferred to Lewis District and it took five referendums to recreate the council. Some of you will remember, yes, joy. Originally destined to be a parish, it did become a town council. I know that some of you will be able to tell me a little more about that. Now, over the past twenty five years, I would say that Seaford's probably changed a bit. Some of you that have been here for that long will know that it's changed in certain ways. And I'd be keen to know what you think. Certainly our population's changed. It's not grown enormously, but it's grown to over another thousand. And also our shops and services have changed. And those of you that are living here will think some of those things are going to be improvements, but maybe some things are not necessarily improved. But there is one significant change that I have noticed when I've been delving into the history of Seaford twenty five years ago. And that is the amount of voluntary organisations that we now have in Seaford, which is of phenomenal amount, I have to say. Twenty five years ago, there were of course voluntary organisations. I don't think Lenny Rupier were working with them. Many of them were kind of arms of, long arms of national bodies, which you would expect citizens, advice bureau agents and others. But I would say that the eclectic, amazing amount of voluntary organisations we have here today just reflects the kind of creativity that is in Seaford, but also the conscious awareness of what our populations need now. One of the things that's quite remarkable about Seaford, but not that different from other local towns, so I would suggest Bexhill and Eastbourne and Seine, is that thirty three percent of our population are over sixty five. And with that comes people needing more services and will support more time on their hands also to be joining things and to be encouraged to support and become volunteers. And so all of our organisations help to do that. And it's been quite phenomenal to meet them and some of you, of course, have been here today. So throughout this municipal year, we've been trying to support and really kind of recognise the fact that here we are, twenty five years, it's a significant number. And we wanted to think about ways of celebrating it. But before we actually go into doing any more of that, I would just like to take a moment just to think about those that are not with us today. We've had twenty five years of mares, but not all of them are able to be with us today. And so I'd like to take just a minute's silence in respect of those that are not with us, which I'll start now. Thank you, everyone. Certainly when those of you that come into the chamber, we have our beautiful boards, artists of our previous leaders and our previous mares. And it's our wonderful panel of photography, photographs. And it is really, I think, lovely that we have that. Not all mayor chambers have that. I've been in quite a lot of town chambers and they don't have those or not quite so significantly. And I think we're very blessed in Seaford to be able to still hold in our hearts and, you know, those that we remember as we're still going through our council processes and meeting together in that room. I think that's really special. So what I'd like to do now is just take a moment to talk through with some of our mares what their experiences have been. Because we have been very, very privileged to be able to meet those. This is my third, yes. Right, hello Laurie. So first of all, I just want to say that Lawrence Hollum, who's also Freeman of the town and very, very welcome here this evening, was my first kind of past mayor that I haven't met when I had just donned my chain this time last year. And you kindly came up and introduced yourself and then told me all about the chain, the chain of office, which is really lovely. And what was significant about the chain of office, for those of you that don't know, is that it stops in about two thousand and two because we decided not to have any more chains. Other mares, you'll notice, may have lots more chains on them, but we decided not to do that. But all the mares that were in place from nineteen forty four pretty much, up to then are written either on the front or the back of all these chains. But also what's interesting, and I'm going to ask Laurie to tell us about it, is the significance of this. What would you call it? I'm sorry, project, just here we go now.
Right, now, the, I need to give you a bit of background if I may.
Absolutely, you can talk to them.
Right, I'll talk to you as well. You see, you can see me now. The background to all this is that in, oh, come to that, nineteen seventy two, created in nineteen seventy four, the Lewis District Council. Now, the Lewis District Council was made up of four areas. One was Seaford Urban District. One was New Haven Urban District. The other was the Borough of Lewis. And finally, it was the Cheltenham Royal District Council. And that council surrounded Lewis Borough right from Sulteen to our Portis. Now, the, what happened then within multiple measures, the towns had the ability to create their own parish council if they wished to do so. New Haven Town Council decided that they liked to carry on and be an parish or created a town council. Lewis Borough eventually did, became a town council. Cheltenham Royal District didn't have to do it that way because Cheltenham Royal District was made up of parishes. And so they didn't have to go down that road. But Seaford Urban District decided that they would not be parish. Now, because of that decision, all of our assets, all of our assets went to the New Lewis District Council. Now, then, eventually during the years, and there are certain town referendums, there were five of them all. One was in nineteen eighty five and the last one was in nineteen ninety five. The object of that exercise, people from Seaford were asking for the provision of a parish council. Three of them failed, they didn't even require a mount. The fourth one came into agreement that by the locals that they wanted a council. But that went to Lewis District with the determined people. They declared to have a parish council at that time, as nineteen eighty five. And then it went to the Borough Commission and they agreed with the council. So that was not into touch. Then the last one was the fifth one, the referendum town poll, that's in nineteen ninety five. There was sufficient interest then percentage wise to have a town council. Now, therefore, the move went to Lewis District Council, who agreed that we should have a town council. That in turn went to Borough Commission, who agreed. So that is the starting point, where we are now. Now, as I said, all our assets went to Lewis. Now, that's why we wanted this chain. Up to that point in time, they, they, the Lewis District, were using the chain. Excuse me, I'm not going to be personal. Yeah, sorry. They, they were using our chain, but not that down here. Because in on this material was the chairman, the Seaford Urban District Council. Now, it occurred to, well, me actually.
Bad Charles.
Bad Charles. Well, we must get that chain back and the model. So we did get it back. Now, what happened then was we got a local silversmith to change the chairman to mayor. And that was the Seaford Urban District changed to town council. So we saved money, you see. And we, we were very conscious of your council taxpayers. So we saved a lot of money there. And so on the back, that was actually given originally by Mr Cox, Sir Cox Tree, Cox Tree, in memory of his son, that turned, got that ghost. And so that meant an awful lot. And so we got his permission to mess around with it and he agreed. So that's why we got that. Now, we got that now, imagine, that as the first asset that we got back.
That's where we go with this all, don't you think?
It's the asset, very important. Now, Sally's touched on the board. Now, the board, if you have been in the council office, you'll see on the left hand side was the Seaford Urban District Councilors. On the right hand side were the mayor, the chairman. And on the right hand side, you'll see the mares. Now, what we did, and we're with them, what we did, we changed the title from Seaford Urban District to Lewis Town Council. Seaford Town Council, Seaford, I just, yeah, to make sure you're listening. It's a Seaford Town Council. And so that is why we've got a lovely board that we can use there. Do you know the ancient, it was up in the leisure centre? And I notice there's a slight impression where some kids bore on it. That's a side issue. There you are on that bit.
I can ask you one more question, Dave. All right. So I actually want to ask you about the role of the mayor. Because that's the conversation we had. Because what the day was called for you, because you were the first mayor. And so you have something to tell me about that, don't you?
Yes, it's, it's very interesting. We were blessed with a very good town clerk, actually. I'll get the money later. Yeah, yeah, if Len Fish was our first class town clerk, he was the town manager prior to his appointment as the town clerk. And so it was a great pleasure working with him. And so we actually did add develop all roles of council. And so from the mayor's side, it was a new appointment. And so the people outside didn't have much time to get back together, to ask us to do those things. So eventually, we became recognised and it went down very well that they had somebody to talk to and go to as representative. I mean, the mayor is the council representative and should be involved to with day to day structure. He's there to work four year on roaming up in the committee.
Thank you, Laurie. Okay, I'm just going to ask you one more question because then I'd like to move on to the others. It's just, what was the best thing for you being mayor?
The best thing really was to meet so many organisations. One heard about them, but didn't know how they act, how they functioned. And so the great pleasure was beating the luck of the rotary and that sort of organisation. But it was very fun to meet them. And it'd be ridiculous to pick out one, but what that does stick to my mind was the prize giving by the Seaford Football Club. They had down measures, measures, the whole centre there, full of a prize giving. It was an incredible side. So that was one of the things. And now it is a great pleasure to be organisations, to see how they function, how the town council could help them in that way.
Thank you. Thank you, Laurie, very, very much. Lovely to have your history there. I'm going to move down the road. So I'm going to come to Rosebury next, Rosebury Collington. You were mayor between two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. And I just wanted to ask you if you could share a memory with us. Thank you. Thank you. You're a bit twisted up there.
My best memory is of visiting the groups of young people, particularly under fives, at all their various play groups and such like. And I wonder now how many of them still live in Seaford. How many of them can actually afford to live in Seaford? Perhaps being a bit political. Why can't I be political? My other great memory is of one of our past mares who is no longer with us. And that is of John Freeman, who was a good friend to Beth Eddy and myself and with whom we had many years of battling various bits of policy. So I would like to remember him here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very, very much. Okay, moving on to this council leader, Laura Ray, who's probably still a councillor with us. I think it might be easier, yes, that is true. Okay, so would you like to give us some memories of your, because you've been mayor quite a few times. In fact, I had a long history, I got two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve, two thousand and twelve to thirteen, two thousand and seventeen to eighteen and two thousand and eighteen to nineteen. Busy lady, okay.
Thank you. Yes, when I was asked this question, there were so many memories I could tell you about. I think I could get all nine. But one which does stick in my mind is that this particular week, I was at a high show of I was at a high-sheriff's garden party on a lovely sunny afternoon. And then the following day, I was on burgers and hot dogs at Drissis Zoo. The evening is called Dream Night and the zoo opens pre-charge. All the staff volunteer their time for families with children with disabilities and severe illnesses. And that night, it's still well up now, was so magical. And to see the smiles on the youngsters' faces, it's a long memory. And it really does stick in my mind. The other thing which has already been touched on is the Seaford Oozes volunteers that give their time freely. They're on some fair ones of our town, 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 sorry. And one noticeable thing while I was mayor was the youngsters, how much they do in our town and they don't often get recognised. So thank you.
Oh, thank you, Laurie. Thank you very much, okay. And now moving on to Mark Brown, of course, very, very much, it's my list. Not bad. And Mark, you were mayor between two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. Would you like to give us some memories? Thank you so much.
Thank you, my honourable mayor, good evening, everybody. I think the highlights of my twelve years as the town councillor have been elected mayor of Seaford twice in two consecutive years. I think that was the first time that happened in Seaford. When I took over the role of mayor, the town council were in a bit of a pickle. There was no working proper officer and the role of deputy proper officer did not exist. So the council in their wisdom decided to appoint me as temporary proper officer until a replacement could be recruited so the council could remain legal. I think that was the first time in Seaford that for a mayor of the town council to also be proper officer of the council. Together with some like-minded councillors and a small reshuffle of council responsibilities, plus the helping guide from Georgia, sitting over there, who was HR and legal responsibilities at that time, and also Luke Stead, who was the accounts manager, we managed to put the guide councillor back onto the right path. I'm pleased to say our councillors evolved since and even though they have considerably increased my tax cuts this year. I think my two greatest achievements as mayor were the creation of the Don Mayby Award, which is on the table at the back there, which is given annually to a Seaford resident who has contributed the most to our town over one actual year. My sponsorship with the Sehaven Storehouse, you might know that better as a Seaford food bank. They started off giving about twenty food passes to needy residents every week and now serve fresh and packaged food to between forty and sixty residents from their food store every Thursday. Although they have currently about a hundred and forty persons on their register. And as my colleague here said, it's totally run by volunteers. And it's a very, very needy organisation in Seaford at the time. They also operate a free cafe on Thursdays where clients can get a hot cold drink to hot food and snacks. I'm proud to say that my wife and myself still volunteer at the storehouse. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, so moving on pace, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. We have David Arden, would you like to share your memories?
Yes, I have lots of very, very pleasant memories. I was led up the Chilchester Cathedral Church, in a cathedral rather, by the bishop three times. He's seated in the front, so that's... And the other thing you get as a mayor, you get your own parking space. Mark, as I remember, has talked about the Don Mayby Award. I was very honoured to receive the first one. So that's once again. And he talked about the food bank as well. I've been volunteering for the food bank, helping out there for a long, long time now. And what I normally do is on a Thursday with other people is go to Lewis Aldeens and load a bag up and bring it back. We unload it and get the bread from the Havens in New Haven. And then I load deliveries or normally, I used to have about between eleven and fifteen deliveries in Peace Haven and New Haven. But that's beginning to drop away now because they've got their own food banks. Because I am also being the official flag raiser for Seaford for many, many years. And of course, next Thursday, again Food Bank Day, we've got to be a flag to be raised. So fortunately, the food bank said they can manage without me going doing the pickups. So I can now go down and raise the flag and then go back to the food bank and do deliveries basically. Always more, Mark said to me when I was made mayor, we heard it, because when you get elected as on council, you get a fortnight to, two weeks, you have to have a mayor, don't you? Within two weeks of the election of council, you have to elect a mayor. So I'm sitting there in the chair that day and they said, Dave Arden for mayor, and everybody put their hands up. So I went in straight in at the big bend. Yes, it was, Mark said to me, he said, basically, you know, you have to give up a year of your life actually, you know, because you have so much to do. But basically, it was a really lovely, lovely year for me. You know, I was invited here, invited all to all different places. And lots of things went on and the council seemed to work together. I think it was two thousand and eighteen that the council got an accolade for being one of the best-known councils at the time. Yes. There you go.
Well done, thank you so much, Dave, lovely, lovely memories. Thank you. And so I'm moving on to two thousand and nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty. Hasiila, dear, thank you so much. Would you like to tell us about your experiences?
Definitely. First of all, I congratulate everybody who's sitting here, including five of us, Seaford Town Councils. Congratulations on the offices and everybody else as well. It has been a great journey for all of us in Seaford, proud of it for us. So, yeah, well, I was the first ever Muslim mayor for Seaford. So that was a time-changing transition. And enjoyed myself most of the time. I was people's member, the children's mayor rather than a business mayor. So if you go back in the times, you can find out that I was on a learning stage when I just got elected. So got a great help from all of the colleagues and passed town clerk as well. That has been very, very, you know, helpful and the officers. So I have members that are in the lake, you know, with children. So I just thought more of the participation of the school than the children is required, especially on the remembrance day. I invited the schools, the county, you know, let us take the children to the cemetery to find out what's going on and what we do. And was very lucky that they agreed. And it was such a touching moment for me and for me and the kids, lying up in such a beautiful way and obeying behaviour, you know, it just boosts them. It just, you know, so that was one of the memories I can never forget. And the kids just paying their respects. And I'm also introduced to a mayor's certificate and to appreciate the local businesses. So I was really close in working and trying to do more for the local businesses. So I went specially to each one of them to appreciate them and them who have been contributing all this time. I just presented them with a mayor's certificate and I hope you obviously are happy, really, very helpful. So, yeah, happy, happy times, happy years. And unfortunately for me was, I was still the mayor and needed to be fighting Covid, so I couldn't just do too much. But, yeah, well, that's, you do a great job, Olivia later, and then send yourself and the others who need rugby. So, yeah, I really would like to say a big thank you for everyone for your cooperation and your participation in Seaford Town Council. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so clearly last but not least. Councillor Olivia, how do you want to share your memory?
Thank you very much. Following on from all other people, I remember when I was a Seashore Consul, it was case we had to eat lots of cake. Everywhere was cake, cake, all cake. So that was really sweet. My, a couple of my memories are when it was a Platinum Jubilee and when we had the light of the beacon. And I found out, I, we had, I did a speech and apparently I was the man who'd done the speech to the most people. So I think it's about a couple of salesmen people, which I'm quite glad I didn't really, I just saw this big swarm of people. That was a really good honour. And then another I was honoured to do as well was when we had the proclamation of King Charles. We first off went to East Sussex County Council, the headquarters in Lewis, where the deputy, sorry, the Lord Lieutenant did the proclamation and then we were then given the proclamation to then go and say that to the towns. So I remember doing that in Seaford by St Leonard's Church. And the part that was a bit scary was when literally I was starting to talk and everyone put their cameras up to take pictures. So I just focused on what I needed to read because, obviously because of the importance and the fact this was a proclamation, so I just did. And I was very honoured to be part of that. And but again, saying what everyone said, the community in Seaford is amazing. There is a lot of really, really hard-working people here who do masses of work. Most of it voluntary or just working in the community and just do amazing things. So thank you very much for everyone. I met lots of people when I was doing this and you just realise what goes on here and how much community, voluntary, and people care. That's something that really comes across, people really care about what goes on in Seaford. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. And I just want to give a round of applause to our mayors. Okay, so we're going to do a bit of a shuffle back. Oh, we stay where we are? Okay, we stay where we are. No shuffling, no shuffling. The next, the next part of the proceeding, if I'm going to hold this, it's so much easier actually, is the part of our idea of celebrating twenty-five years was actually also to create a Seaford flag. So we have a flag. And this is to mark the occasion. I'd also like to invite Laurie as our first town mayor and also Dave Arden as our devoted honorary flag custodian for over seven years to receive and hold up the Seaford town flag. Want to hold that together?
Right where we are.
Right now. So the flag design uses the symbol, colours and town motto from the Seaford coat of arms. The Limpford old ship is similar to one of the Seaford's original corporation's seal and a reminder of the town's former status as a port. A half-ship symbol appears on the badges of many of the St Port's member towns and serves as a reminder that Seaford for some hundreds of years was associated with a group as a bin of Hastings. The eagle, also represented on the old town seal, comes from the arms of the Depila family, who owned their land hereabouts in medieval times. The Latin motto, 'Eventis viris', translates from the wind's strength. We all know about the wind. The town flag will be flown at the main flagpole at the Liverpool Memorial on all the days that don't conflict with other national flag flying days. So we're just going to take a moment to take some pictures of this amazing flag. And we'd also like to take a moment to take some pictures of all our mayors as well. So if you would just stay with us for a moment to do these things and then we'll go and shuffle, shuffle around.
Good time, my good.
Okay, thank you, everybody. A little bit of sorting ourselves out. So the next, the next item on our programme, item, gender item five, is to just have an opportunity to hear about the charity that I chose to support this year. And I'm not going to say too much about the charity because we have someone here who's quite capable of saying all about the charity, Mary Lemonley, from Seafriends, who's been working alongside me pretty much most of the year, which has been wonderful. And I'd like to invite Mary at this moment to just give a presentation which we have and she's going to use the mic and go through that with you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mary.
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Seafriends, how we came about and what we do in the town. And really, I just want to reiterate what all of the mayors have said about how wonderful volunteers are in this town because without volunteers, this charity wouldn't exist. So Seafriends came about, oh, I've broken that already. Thank you. So we came about just as Covid came and lockdown came. And we're very interested in social isolation and loneliness. And Sally's argument showed we do have a higher than average proportion of over sixty-fives in our town, which is fantastic as a bank of volunteers. But also the people, they start to need more help and assistance to...
to maintain their independence and lead a full life. So I'm not going to read from the slides because you're all perfectly capable of reading, but it is quite shocking the number of people who suffer with social isolation and loneliness. So there is, there is a very subtle difference between social isolation and loneliness. And it's very subjective. It's the difference between the amount of social interaction and contact that we want and the amount we actually have. So that's very different for everybody. So that can be somebody who's living in a big city surrounded by lots of people, has a very active life and they can still feel very lonely and isolated. Or somebody who spends a lot of time on their own and is one of them. And they don't need to get out about to enjoy life. So again, we've got some stats here mainly about national loneliness. And I'll leave that there for a few minutes. But loneliness can happen to anybody at any point in their life. I'm sure you're all aware of the Joe Cox Foundation that talks about loneliness and isolation. So it's not just older people. It can be people from any life change. So having a baby, moving jobs, moving to a new area, losing a partner, retirement. There are myriad of reasons why somebody could become lonely or socially isolated. So, to you about Seaford. So as Sally mentioned, we do have a higher than average number of over 65s. And the groups of people that you see there came together to discuss how we could improve life for people in Seaford and what we could do. We decided that what was missing in Seaford was a one-to-one befriending service. There weren't, there were quite a few social groups, but a lot of times it's very difficult to go across that threshold. For the very first one, we think everybody else knows each other. So with some one-to-one befriending is a gentle start to get back into mixing with people and interacting. So that's what we started with. And as I mentioned, that's when Covid shut down. So we were all locked down and social isolation and loneliness, that became quite a big discussion point because people that hadn't felt it before felt it. And also through one-to-one befriending, which at that point we did on the telephone, people were able to give something back to the town, but they also got something back because they had that social interaction person they were matched with. So as we came out of lockdown, we spoke to the people who were using our services and we said, what would you like? And the overwhelming thing they said was they wanted a safe space to meet, to start seeing people face-to-face and chat, have coffee and of course cake. As Olivia mentions, everything comes with cake. So here's some pictures here of some of our members. And this was a fantastic day. Skip came down to our coffee morning and made some of the lanterns that were in the parade. So it's really nice to work with some of the other groups in the town as well. Something else that we do, St Peter's Church came to us and said, we've got a space, but we don't have the time. We'd really like to help those in the community who are living with memory loss and their carers. So we facilitated the Forget It Not Cafe. This is a very, very volunteer-led group. They've come up with the name. We have some fantastic volunteers, but one of them is in the room here, my Wendy. And our volunteers range with people with personal experience of caring for somebody who live in their family or their friends with memory loss, right through to professional careers in memory loss. And they look so much to the group. Really safe space where you all can drop in and have a cup of tea, a cake and a nice chat. And we're lucky enough that Glutchington Manor on the hall was being refurbished they actually used their summer rooms. So here's some lovely Friday mornings there in the summer. Here are three of our wonderful volunteers. As I mentioned, we can't do anything without our volunteers. And this was a day that the church put on a relaxed Christmas concert for everybody. So the children from the primary school came and sang for us all. And there were lots of people were able to enjoy going into the church and enjoying carols that wouldn't normally have been comfortable in that environment. So we now do those four times a year with the church. So it's got, not carols four times a year, we do Easter with Harleys etc. And another thing, so everything that Seafriends tries to do is something that the members have asked us to do. So we don't just sort of parachute ourselves in saying, you need this and you need that. Everything has grown organically from things we've been asked for. And this is another group that we run. And people come along, bring whatever project they're working on. And, well, I'll be honest with you, there's not much work that goes on. There's a lot of chat, a lot of tea and cake, funny enough. So another thing that we were asked to do was day trips. And so we've had some fantastic day trips, getting people out of Seaford who wouldn't normally be able to get out of Seaford. This was the very first trip we took, which was to Racine, and they gave us a fantastic behind-the-scenes tour. And we met the doctors, highlighter. There's another, another fun day trip down to Eastbourne and we all rode the naughty train all the way along. It was actually my son's 22nd birthday and he decided to come along for the day. I've got a fantastic picture of him sitting in the engine pretending to drive. He's going to kill me for saying that. This is a very sensitive kid, isn't it? So we try and run Christmas parties for all our members every year. And we're lucky enough to have the bell ringers, we have Sunshine Strugglers coming this year and play for us and it's a nice relaxed affair. This was with a rotary Christmas party that we've helped with over the last couple of years. And great fun, dancing. And we also, we were asked to put on some cinema screenings. So we approached the community cinema and asked if they'd help us put on some screenings. So this was the second one we put on. Our third one is in June and it's a screening where anyone can get up, walk around, sing, dance. We don't provide cake at that one, so maybe I could, maybe I could move forward and get cake there. So what we really like to do is to work with other groups in the town and provide our services around lots of different parts of the town and react, as I said, to what's going on. So briefly, this was one of Sally's ideas. It's been amazingly supportive and there might have been crazy ideas that we've done over the last years, it's been great fun. We were trying to, I'm not sure if you're aware, that every Christmas day, there are fantastic couples put on a Christmas meal for people that live on their own. So I tried to get a couple of my ladies and gents invites and they were full. And this was in November, they were already full. So Sally said, why don't we do one? So within less than a week, we had it funded, sponsored by both Rotary Clubs and the Alliance who kind of gave us the money. We had entertainment organised, we had the food organised, we had the volunteers organised, transport organised and of course, kind of a Christmas party without the big man himself. So Santa came and gave out presents to everyone as well. So it was a really, really lovely day, which we're going to try and do again. We're going to try and keep that going. And here's some pictures, Sally in her amazing coat, of course. Oh, you can lay down playing. So we can't do this without volunteers. So we had, we started off at Covid and we had a huge amount of volunteers come join us there. And we're still running with around 25 volunteers at the moment, ranging from people that make cakes for us to people that drive for us, people that have professional knowledge that they'll share and people who will sit and chat with people, which is sometimes the most important thing. Here's some pictures of first aid training. So we did try and put on some training. So we've done this one, we've got another first aid training course coming up soon. We've done some cyber awareness training, got a little more funny goggles, which was a really, really lovely lot that day. So we're almost halfway through 25 now, but this is what we've been doing this year. So as Sally mentioned earlier, we've set up some community network bunchies. So this is for the groups of Seafords to come together, get to know each other, get to know what each other does and work collaboratively. If we don't know who is in the town, we don't know how we can work together to improve the town. So these, so far have been really, really advantageous. And we've got the next one coming up in June. So if you don't get an invite, please get in touch because we don't know who all of you are. So get in touch with us and say, we'd like to come, we'd like to come and meet you as well. So every year, the last few years, we've worked with Rotary and we've done Christmas parties. But literally they've decided to change it to a spring party. So week after next week, we've got our Seaford Spring, well, they've changed it to, to Seaford Spring Party. They took Swarney out of it, that's why, my dear, they didn't like it. And we're holding a party for 45 members of the community who live on their own and don't want to get out. They will have transport, a free tea, entertainment and a free raffle. And Rotary always give them a nice, a nice welcome and sharing. So they enjoy that. And also with the support of Wave Leisure, we are looking at starting up a men's shed. So we are, we have a space next to Wave Leisure and we have, with their tools and we have some men who are interested and we're going to build on this. I don't know if anybody knows about Men's Sheds, they're an international organisation and they're really, really beneficial particularly to men's mental health. It's so important. So that's just a brief overview of what Seafriends does. And I'd like to thank Sally for choosing us to be your charity of the year. And I've learned so much from you this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mary, for that. I always learn something from you when you give a presentation. And Mary, such a good teacher to learn from me. I think I've learned so much from working. One of the responsibilities, as we said earlier, of our mayor at the start of the role is to select a charity and Seafriends was my selection for good reasons, obviously. But keep those laid out. One of the tasks that we have is also to help fundraise for that charity. And I'm delighted to be able to present Mary with the certificate of the donations that we receive from our, what we call an incognito evening. I know some of you in the room are there. It was very amusing. We actually had Marco, the magician, who came up with some particularly clever tricks. And it was, and Mary did a presentation as well at the local rugby club. It was a great, a great fish and chip evening. Lots of fun, lots of lovely, lovely laughter photographs, very fun photographs. And people just enjoyed themselves so much. But I'm very proud to say that out of that evening, we had about 45 people attending, we raised £800 for Seafriends. I'd like to present you with that certificate. Okay, thank you, Mary, so much. Okay, so next on my agenda is to talk about the awards because another wonderful challenge that I have during the year is to select people who somebody mentioned earlier. I need to think about people who have been working exceptionally hard. And it's quite clear that many of you have been working exceptionally hard. And so what, we keep saying it, but I wrote it down in my speech just to let you know that I was being very proud of it. That one thing, one fact about Seaford Library this year made absolutely clear to me this year is our fantastic voluntary community sector are the golden thread that runs seamlessly throughout Seaford, which enables a sense of belonging and acceptance, where people feel more included, sociable and valued, improving health and wellbeing, supporting those lonely and isolated. And that is absolutely true. If you remember that little photograph, the, all the organisations get together, they're all doing this because I've given them a golden thread to hold. So it's quite amusing photograph, though. It kind of got the idea of being connected. So I'm really fortunate to have participated and met so many groups this year. And I've come to the conclusion that everyone thinks that something is impossible until somebody comes along and figures out that it isn't. And this is how I see the recipients of my mayor's awards this evening. For me, recognition goes to those that have contributed towards making the impossible possible. And they have all played their part in many different ways. And to begin our time further, I'd like to acknowledge all the wonderful volunteers that have supported so many of the events. And, and you know, I think you're all worthy of prizes, to be perfectly honest, but I have to apparently narrow that down. So my first starting point for awards is that I'm, I can, I'm able to give out highly commended certificates. And those are for individuals and organisations who've been so willing to respond to my calls for help and have been involved with many local initiatives which support community engagement as part of their fundamental commitment. So the first, the first highly commended certificate that I would like to hand out is to Miranda Burns Lowell's, Vicky Skipping, so I know who's in this at the moment, and Carol Trinby, for your commitment and collaboration to ensure the success of Christmas Magic 2024 and going forwards. Thank you so much. We meet regularly, we do. We have a lot to say to each other. I have to say that it's also been an absolute pleasure for me this year to be part of the Chamber of Commerce. I meet both of these lovely ladies there regularly. In fact, we have breakfast together at seven o'clock this morning. But it's actually light because I got up and it's still light at six o'clock in the morning. So that was a delight. Okay, so Miranda, congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. Also to Carol, thank you for your hard work. Would you have a photo of us open by my back? Okay. So up next, we've all, we've already mentioned that, Mary and I already mentioned that we've been working actually with Wave Leisure. And it's been really interesting this year because I also chair a health stakeholders group and Wave Leisure have come along to that, Duncan Kerr and some of his staff have been amazing in supporting and hosting many of the groups that we've been talking about. And in fact, the CEO Duncan and his colleague Gavin have been supporting Mary and setting up a men's shed at Wave Leisure. And we're so delighted that we've been able to collaborate with you. But it's not just that because when Mary and Duncan met the health stakeholders, they left the room having already managed to organise a chat group to be hosted there at Wave Leisure as well. So we wanted to make connections, we wanted to see how much each other, organisation can support each other. So I would like to give the next certificate to Duncan. Thank you so much for all your help. I also have one more certificate to give out, but unfortunately the lady is not here. But it's actually to Seaford Library. Now, I hope all of you go to Seaford Library. It's an amazing space, they've done a renovation recently. But they're not just a library, they are a community space and they've been doing lots of amazing work there and they've been engaging with us as well. They were very happy to host the display of the Community Coats late last year to this year. They also run community groups, they run teaching English groups, which I've met. They do a host of other things with young people. And in the past, I know they've been really involved with Christmas magic as well. So the lady I was going to give the certificate to is Zoe Jones, who's a senior librarian there and works obviously for the East Sussex County Council. But I'm awaiting Zoe to give a presentation at the library next week, so I'll be doing that. Anyway, I'm going to give a clap to Zoe. Okay, but there's more to come. So the other part of the award ceremony is that I'm asked to think about categories for awards, which is terribly exciting, it's all very creative. And this year, I chose four categories of special mayor's awards, which range from innovation, entertainment, creativity and community support. Many directly supporting my role as mayor, both in front and behind the scenes, that has made everything possible for me as well. So the first one is the award for innovation. I'm going to read out, which I wrote, because it'll be a bit faster. I have been quite astounded by the innovation that has come from this group. I've encountered them before my tour, but was so struck by their ability to focus on such details of the world around them and then contemplate the feelings they attached to these observations over the past 12 months. I invited them to present a poem just before the start of each full council meeting. And these poetic moments, as William Mursworth has described them, offer us emotion recollected in tranquility. And as we council as officers and members of the public, still ourselves and gather our thoughts, we are for a few minutes transported into our poet's observations of our local environment, or their experience of living in Seaford, or recollections of love, loss and celebration. And I am enormously grateful to look for their offers of support. And so I'd like to welcome Chris Goode from Sea Living Poets to come and receive an award on behalf of that group tonight. Okay, so my next category is awards for creativity. Now, within this category, I have awards for two people that have offered me so much support for a particular outcome this year. Now, when you stand up in a meeting and say, I'm thinking of making a coat. Well, not me exactly, but it wouldn't be, wouldn't it be wonderful if people came together and made patches about their perceptions of Seaford or the organisation they belong to? How amazing if these were then displayed on a coat, which could actually become part of the celebration of Seaford Town Council's 25 years? I guess I stand before you in the knowledge that Seaford has responded to what I thought was probably going to be impossible. Especially as the idea was only shared in October. And I actually said that by the end of November, I wanted to display the results by wearing the coat at the Lantern Parade for Christmas Magic. When it was mentioned, someone immediately said, oh, that would be great. I could cut the patch squares and give them away in my shop. And then I could run workshops in the evening to help people design their patches. And someone else said, well, if you give the coating to me, I can embroider your logo on the back. And then they both, with the thought from colleagues, agreed to help me pin the patches and sew them on. Astonishing. All of this took hours and hours of work on no mean feat. If I could give awards to all the 91% of organisations who have since sent in their patches, I would. But I do feel without the let's do that attitude from these particular people, we would have struggled to make this happen. The rewards have been enormous. I've heard so many groups of getting together for sewings. I've visited some of our scores and celebrated patch making with pupils and staff. I've heard from organisations delighted to see their patches displayed in the library next week at Wave Leisure. And thanks to both of these organisations, you're going to see the coat a little bit longer. So I would therefore like to thank Terry Simmons from Be Creative, please come up, and Dawn Mum from Phone and Fabrics to receive their Mayor's Award for Creativity. Dawn. That's all right, thank you. We need to go to our office. Thank you. However, just before we leave this particular subject, there's also someone else coming to see us, hoping not to be found. And so I would like to give these flowers to my friend in inspirational service that helped us fit the coat. Because about having a coat in the first place, there would be nothing to put the patches on. So Maggie Chitty likes to come up, who's a friend and neighbour who's helped me with this project so much for its inspiration. Okay, so moving on, our fourth for entertainment. Now, the next award goes to a group of volunteers who have strived to entertain many of you in Seaford at all major events. I've been part of. The next award goes to a group of volunteers who have strived to entertain many of you in Seaford at all major events I've been part of. They turn up in all weathers, they bring joy and fun to any function and are easily allowed to play alongside them. Some of you will have seen them at civic reception, Christmas magic, our Christmas Eve lunch. And the only concerning comment I could possibly make is, whenever you ask them for help, they never say no. And of course, referring to Strum for Fun and our local, one of our local ukulele groups. And I would like Ann Vickers to come up and receive that award on behalf of the Women's. I have to add that I only started playing the ukulele just over a year ago. I must have been painful for them, really.
When you asked us to do a Christmas Eve event, I wasn't sure I was going to get people, but I did.
You did, a thankful thanks. It was absolutely amazing. Shall we talk over to those? Yes. Okay, so my final award in this category is for community support. And you've heard his name already this evening in different connotations, but I'm delighted to welcome Ben Fisher. Yay! Who this evening presented this award for his commitment and sheer resilience in keeping Seaford connected through his volunteer work. We see him, although he has recently left the station, he's been alongside me these past two years in my role as Deputy Mayor there in his capacity as Sea Haven FM presenter for just under seven and a half years. He's also well known to our local councillors and staff having worked alongside our first Mayor, Seaford Laurie Holland, as his town clerk in 1999. Our local radio station has been a lifeline to our community, especially through the pandemic. Last November, the station announced you would have to close. However, following the announcement, the station received many, many messages of support by phone, email and on social media. And with the local community suggesting ways in which it might support the station to continue. Now, Len and his colleague, Tom Bonner, were responsible for recording a mini interview with our first Mayor of Seaford and freeman of the town, Laurie Holland. And I was, I was able to present an award last night on air to Tom Bonner, who was slightly surprised, well, he thought he was coming to talk about something else as we were live on air. And I was able to give him one of these awards as well. He's unable to be with us this evening because he's off on holiday. So I would now like to present this award to Ben Fisher. And I want to thank you for doing all your amazing work. Did you say no publicity? Oh, I didn't, no publicity. Don't look. Lovely, thank you. Can I, can I just add that Ben and Tom helped me to make a mini interview with Laurie in the chamber, in our chamber. We thought it would be quite a good idea to capture all of Laurie's insights into being first Mayor. So we have a CD and we're going to try and work out how we can get some of the snippets of that amazing interview, you know, and all of Laurie's fantastic reflections. We will be working away at the town council to try and get that to you on our website as well. So thank you very much for that. Okay, so finally, I have to honour, I have the honour of selecting the Men of the Don Mayby Award. It was mentioned by Mark earlier. Thank you for making this award happen for us. It's an amazing award. We have two shields here because the first shield has already filled up. Yes, that's the new one, yeah, lovely. And what I'd like to do is to just tell you a little bit about this year's winner. And I'm going to read it out. The award winner of this special prize is someone who has quite literally been by my side at all the functions and celebrations I have had the pleasure of organising this year. They are incredibly committed to their work and their philosophy of bringing people together and supporting and enabling those who often have the least help and support is a testimony to the reason why I have chosen them for this award. They have a tenacious appetite for hard work and an outstanding reputation amongst their volunteers. This person considers our community in such direct and supportive ways that the majority of you here will know them. And I'm quite sure you will agree with my choice. They have helped me through my civic reception, Christmas magic, carol concert, my work in the health stakeholders, shareholders working group, the Christmas Eve, their impromptu lunch, and ongoing and ongoing at Christmas Eve lunch, the creation of the men's shed for our Seaford and also Seaford community groups, networking lunches, and continues to raise issues to be addressed from all facets of our Seaford community. You have already heard from them today, in all the work they do. Sorry, I'm emotional about this. Sea Friends and cycling without age. They have been, they are a amazing charity and they support this year. And of course, sorry, I'm losing my pages. I can't read it, otherwise I'll just get silly. And also, the incognito evening really was actually quite a riot for those who were there. We both agree that sharing a tea together is a dangerous occupation for both of us. It is my utmost pleasure to be able to give Mary lovely the Don Mayby Award for your incredible commitment to bringing people together and through these connections enable those who often have the least help to just get some extra support. So I just want to congratulate Mary on you to come up and take it. Thanks, Sally, for the award. But this week, of all the volunteers, that volunteer, Sea Friends, cycling for age and continue to do so, really to them. Yeah, absolutely. But here you go. Finally, I have one more award to give. Well, it's actually to give back. I would like to recognise someone who has been by my side again, making himself heard on so many occasions this year. They have been representing Seaford Town for over 45 years. Their unique uniform, made by the Queen's Naval Uniform Maker, frequent sight in Seaford's Broad Street. I am of course talking about Peter White, one of the longest-serving town prayers in the country. And in 1980, he joined the ancient and honourable guild of town prayers. He's hiding behind his hands. As the previous Don Mayby Award winner, we would like to make him custodian of the first Don Mayby Shield in which his name is inscribed as a reminder that we acknowledge his continuing service for Seaford and our gratitude for his amazing voice and commitment to our community. Sorry, Peter.
When Lewis District passed assets to the Seaford Town Council, they had one particular package which was interesting. It was the golf course, the toilets and the town clock.
So, everyone, so now we are on to agenda ID seven, which is actually over to you, everyone. So this is your question and answer time. We truly hope you enjoyed an answer time forum. And I'd just like to ask if anyone has any comments or questions. And I will do my best and my lovely officers will do their best. Well, he thought he was coming to talk about something else as we were live on air. And I was able to give him one of these awards as well. He's unable to be with us this evening because he's off on holiday. So I would now like to present this award to Ben Fisher. And I want to thank you for doing all your amazing work. Did you say no publicity? Oh, I didn't, no publicity. Don't look. Lovely, thank you. Can I, can I just add that Ben and Tom helped me to make a mini interview with Laurie in the chamber, in our chamber. We thought it would be quite a good idea to capture all of Laurie's insights into being first Mayor. So we have a CD and we're going to try and work out how we can get some of the snippets of that amazing interview, you know, and all of Laurie's fantastic reflections. We will be working away at the town council to try and get that to you on our website as well. So thank you very much for that. Okay, so finally, I have to honour, I have the honour of selecting the Men of the Don Mayby Award. It was mentioned by Mark earlier. Thank you for making this award happen for us. It's an amazing award. We have two shields here because the first shield has already filled up. Yes, that's the new one, yeah, lovely. And what I'd like to do is to just tell you a little bit about this year's winner. And I'm going to read it out. The award winner of this special prize is someone who has quite literally been by my side at all the functions and celebrations I have had the pleasure of organising this year. They are incredibly committed to their work and their philosophy of bringing people together and supporting and enabling those who often have the least help and support is a testimony to the reason why I have chosen them for this award. They have a tenacious appetite for hard work and an outstanding reputation amongst their volunteers. This person considers our community in such direct and supportive ways that the majority of you here will know them. And I'm quite sure you will agree with my choice. They have helped me through my civic reception, Christmas magic, carol concert, my work in the health stakeholders, shareholders working group, the Christmas Eve, their impromptu lunch, and ongoing and ongoing at Christmas Eve lunch, the creation of the men's shed for our Seaford and also Seaford community groups, networking lunches, and continues to raise issues to be addressed from all facets of our Seaford community. You have already heard from them today, in all the work they do. Sorry, I'm emotional about this. Sea Friends and cycling without age. And they have been, they are a amazing charity and they support this year. And of course, sorry, I'm losing my pages. I can't read it, otherwise I'll just get silly. And also, the incognito evening really was actually quite a riot for those who were there. We both agree that sharing a tea together is a dangerous occupation for both of us. It is my utmost pleasure to be able to give Mary lovely the Don Mayby Award for your incredible commitment to bringing people together and through these connections enable those who often have the least help to just get some extra support. So I just want to congratulate Mary on you to come up and take it. But this week, of all the volunteers, that volunteer, Sea Friends, cycling for age and continue to do so, really to them. But this week, of all the volunteers, there are volunteers, See Friends, Cypher for Age, and they continue to do so. Really, so they.
Yeah, absolutely. But here you go. Give us that.
Finally, I have one more award to give. Well, it's actually to give back. I would like to recognise someone who has been by my side again, making himself heard on so many occasions this year. They have been representing Seaford Town for over 45 years. Their unique uniform, made by the Queen's Naval Uniform Maker, is a frequent site in Seaford's Broad Street. I am, of course, talking about Peter White, one of the longest-serving town prayers in the country. And in 1980, he joined the ancient and honourable guild of town prayers. He's hiding behind his hands. As the previous Don Mayby Award winner, we would like to make him custodian of the first Don Mayby Shield in which his name is inscribed, as a reminder that we acknowledge his continuing service for Seaford and our gratitude for his amazing voice and commitment to our community. Sorry, Peter. Sorry. Okay, so thank you, everyone. So now we are on to Agenda IT seven, which is actually over to you, everyone. So this is your question and answer time. We truly hope you enjoyed an answer time forum. And I'd just like to ask if anyone has any comments or questions. And I will do my best and my lovely officers will do their best to.